I think the first one to take up is probably the setback issue. That's something that you can resolve in an open session and then move on. I will be requesting a closed session to discuss the other topics. We'll recall at the last meeting, there was some discussion regarding what authority the county has in establishing setbacks. And basically, in order for consistency between different parts of the code, how should we measure the setback? Should we be looking at a setback from the center line of the VDOT right of way? Should we be doing a setback from the actual as constructed roadway? The edge of the pavement, if you will, or from the edge of the right of way? And so I got a chance to look at the code. I think subdivision agent Mr. Terrence had a chance to come up with some examples and some practical considerations that I think the board needs to consider. And so before we dive into the legalities, I might ask Ms. Terrence to describe some of the practical issues, particularly with regard to if we decided to measure from the center line of the right of way.
Good morning.
After the board discussed at their last meeting regarding the setback, where it should be measured from, and I know that the purpose is to get the regular setback in the code to match what's in the subdivision ordinance. And what I understood from the discussion was that I guess it would be measured from the public right of way, which was a question that we had because in the subdivision ordinance, it's only measured from the public right of way. And so Holt wanted to know where to measure the regular building setback from? And what did it also relate to private roads? In that discussion, there was a mention of the setback being measured possibly from the center of the road or the center of the right of way. And Ladeen and I have had discussions about this. And there may be an issue with that depending on where the road is and how wide the road is. What I'm giving you on the back has a diagram or an image showing Route 8, Stewart's Knob, which is approximately seventy-six to eighty feet wide, right of way. If you measured the thirty-five feet from the center of that right of way, you would still be in the right of way. And we would not, that would not fit what the, if it was going to be a subdivision, they could not do that. But that is how the building setback would be measured if it were to pass what was discussed last month. We have several areas along 221 and Route 8 where the right of way is larger than fifty feet. And in those areas, as such as this that I've showed you, the setback could still be in the right of way. And so we would ask that you take that into consideration when you're talking about where to measure from. If it's measured from the center of the road, the center of roads are always in the center of the right of way. I know Mark has talked to me about it being measured from the center of the road, possibly. Right now, or before your last meeting, it was measured from the edge of the pavement, which would be better than from the center of the road. We'd just like for you to take into consideration that if you were to do it from the center of the road, we feel like it would need to be larger than thirty-five feet. And you could possibly make it in stages. If the right of way is larger than fifty feet wide, then it has to be sixty feet from the center of the right of way. Right now, in the subdivision ordinance, if it's a thirty-foot prescriptive easement, it has to be sixty feet from the center of the road, which would be the property line for a prescriptive easement. But if it's a thirty-foot right of way, it's not a prescriptive easement. It only has to be thirty-five feet from the front property line. So I think in taking into consideration when you're updating this is also trying to get it to be the same as the subdivision ordinance. Because people are confused. They'll call me and they'll say, "Well, it has, you know, where's the setback from?" "Oh, well, I'm not on a subdivision." And then I say, "Well, then you need to talk to Mr. Holt." And then they'll call me back and they'll say, "Well, he told me the setback was different than what you told me." So it does get a little confusing. The subdivision ordinance committee has been working or had been working on it. I give you what our current definition is, and then a little sheet showing what the current definition is and then what a potential update might be. And this could be a road that we cross later. If the subdivision ordinance committee were to recommend private roads, then we would also need to discuss whether or not there would be a setback off of that private road as well as the public road. And so that could potentially change the other portion of the ordinance as well. Do you all have any questions?
Might be a good time for me to jump in. So I think in addressing the problem of measuring the center line, from a legal standpoint, you probably could do that and have some legislative deference and have your ordinance be valid, although I think it'd be impractical to do that for the reason that Mr. Terrence would put a finger on. There could be some times when a thirty-five-foot setback from the center line is still going to be in the right of way. And so it'd be like having no setback at all. And I'd call your attention to your enabling legislation, which is fifteen point two, Act 2279. There are two clauses, and they're worded differently. First clause states that any locality made by ordinance regulate the building of houses in the locality, including the adoption of off-street parking requirements, minimum setback and side yards, and the establishment of minimum lot sizes. There's no limitation on the length of setback you can adopt for houses. If you, so you might be able to measure from the center line and sell something practical. Maybe you make a seventy-five-foot setback or wherever you want to draw the line. But you'd be limited for houses. When you go to the second clause, that's your authority for other buildings. And that clause provides that any locality made by ordinance require that no building be constructed within thirty-five feet of any street or roadway. And then there's some additional language that allows you to provide exceptions to that. But I really see that thirty-five-foot limitation as the maximum setback that you can adopt for buildings. Our code includes the term structures as well, but I think that the language in the Code of Virginia has broadened up to buildings in the Code of Virginia equates to structures or buildings. But so you'd be adopting, you'd be in the situation of having to potentially adopt different standards for buildings as you would for houses, and I just wouldn't recommend that. What's that? Agricultural, your, you know, your pole barn, your garage, your detached garage, things like that. Church, your business, your store. It just, it would make things, I think, it would, the water's muddier. So I would recommend, I think you can measure from the edge of the finished road surface or the edge of the right of way. If you feel like, my recommendation would be for consistency, is to measure from the edge of the right of way. And if you feel like thirty-five feet is a long way, you can go less than that. But I think it makes sense to measure from, the subdivision ordinance, the subdivision agent is evaluating from the edge of the property. So for consistency, I think.
So on paved roads, where would we measure from? If it's a...
I think that's a good question.
If the property line essentially goes to the center line on some of these roads.
Well, it does on some of these paved roads too. I know one, this one right here, Stewart's Knob, I can verify that.
If they were subdividing, it doesn't matter whether it's a paved road or a gravel road, it would be measured from the front of the property line.
Because we're talking about an easement rather than a...
So on Stewart's Knob, if we did a thirty-five-foot setback, it would be measured from the center line.
Because that's where his property line is.
And I know a building that was built measuring it that way. I can verify it because I was told so at that time. I wasn't on board at the time, so thank goodness.
So right now, if the, if the property line goes to the center of the road and it's a prescriptive easement, it would be sixty feet from that line in the subdivision ordinance.
But if not on a building, and we can only go thirty-five feet for a building?
If it's an equipment yield, then it has to be thirty-five feet from the center line if the property line's in the center of the road.
Or thirty-five feet for the end of the pavement? If it's not, if the property line doesn't go to the center of the road?
I have a couple of questions. Can you get rid?
The code says that you may require by ordinance, as for buildings, that they may not be constructed within thirty-five feet of any street or roadway. So it's really a matter of making it, doing the best we can to make it consistent. You're not limited by the Code of Virginia to the edge of the property line in the case of a prescriptive easement if there's a road.
But it would be more restrictive.
That's what throws me is when you say roadway. Because going back years ago, I had a visual offender, you know, kept wanting to ride up ten feet off the road and on the roadside. When I was, ended up charging, you know, the lawyer said, "Well, he wasn't near the road." I got the guy from, he was from VDOT to come down, and the right of way was sixty feet. And he said the roadway is from the edge of the right of way to the edge of the right of way. And then the road is the travel portion of the road. So I was able to convict him because he was within that right of way. So are you talking about thirty-five feet from the edge of the right of way?
Or the pavement or road?
The answer to that either or question is yes. Well, you can, in all, you know, all joking aside, I think you have the authority to decide that. I think that you can say, "We're going to measure from the edge of the finished surface." What might make sense is to measure from the edge of the right of way or in the case of a, where the property line actually goes into the center line of the roadway, then from the finished, the finished edge of the road would be your setback. As long as you're making it consistent in your subdivision ordinance and...
And finished edge of the road could also be a finished edge to a gravel road, is what you're saying?
Yes. Yeah, as constructed. If it's constructed of gravel, it's the edge of the...
Yeah, finished edge, so that's answered that question.
And this is whether it's a maintained road or a discontinued road?
I think you have the authority to decide that. And I think that you have the authority to decide that it applies to private roads if we...
So desire.
So desire.
Well, it is safety.
Well, my next question, and I understand this right here because that down through there is it was way on 221 and Route 8. Can you distinct a different one for a primary road versus a secondary road? In other words, if you have an ordinance that applies, there's, I don't know of any of the secondary roads that's got seventy feet on them. But I'm sure, I know for a fact, on Route 8, all the way to Christiansburg, it varies. Because when they started doing that upgrade back in the seventies, the original attempt was to four-lane from Floyd to Christiansburg. And they had already acquired a lot of the rightways through there when the uprising took place. That's the best way I know to put it. The uprising took place, so Madison Reed backed off of the four-lane project and just fixed the two-lane. But they retained those rightways they had already gotten signed.
They didn't give them up?
No.
My question would be, are we passing this ordinance or updating this ordinance to keep people out of VDOT right of way or just for sidewalks? Because I think that's two different things. At some point, the VDOT right of way takes care of itself.
I think what, for my part, the easiest thing is to do a minimum from the right of way, whether it's ten feet, five feet, whatever, from the right of way. That protects, keeps somebody from building in the right of way, and that helps with your site distance as well if we do it from the right of way itself.
You still go back to what roads the property line is to the center of the road?
No, I'm talking about the, and I weren't, I'm not talking about the property line. I'm talking about the VDOT right of way, not property line.
For example, a building inspector goes out and measures. It's on a little back dirt road.
He's going to research and see what the prescriptive easements or whatever it is to. Or we do away with this and just handle it whatever it handles in the subdivision. We've granted at least one on Garrett's lane, which is a private road. I don't like the restrictions on private roads. You know, as far as I'm concerned, we can take that out. And most of the, I can guarantee you the vast majority of the discontinued roads in this county will not be put back in the system.
You would think that.
Well, VDOT's already said, if it's done, the people have to do it. They're not building roads.
You could measure, you could measure from the finished edge of the roadway as constructed. And there might be some situations where that doesn't get the person out of the, out of the platted right of way or the...
What's I'm saying, if you go from the edge of the pavement...
That would be just by case situation.
If you go from by the edge of the pavement on Route 221, you're not going to get them out.
But is that the goal of this ordinance?
But if you...
Build on the state right of way anyway.
But if they're given a, but if they're given the go-ahead by Mark, oh yeah, there you go. And he doesn't know that the easement is there because we're not trying to make it any more cumbersome for our staff person to do this. Ultimately, we were trying to make this more streamlined. Isn't that what we were trying to do?
The biggest thing was that we've had in the last year or two, or since I've been on board, we've had more requests for variances that we grant. I don't know of any that's been turned down. And for my part, the purpose, if we're going to continue granting variances, then why not have it set up where it doesn't have to go through that much of a process? And is it something that we need to be controlling in an individual ordinance? Because you can't build in a VDOT right of way. I don't care whether it's prescriptive easement or a right of way.
So if you're just establishing that, when you put the VDOT right of way issue aside, if you're just establishing that we're, we're nearly thirty-five feet from the edge of the roadway as constructed, for example, then you've at least addressed the safety concerns. Although subdivision may not, that may not always be a measure for the subdivision ordinance.
And we're back to...
And there is...
That's where we'll, if we do it that, because that's what we've currently been doing.
My loyalty to the ladies and just keep granting variances. As far as I'm concerned though, the private roads need to be brought from, in my opinion.
Well, I think one of the other issues that I'm starting to figure out.
Because if I build a private road through my farm, how close I put my hay field to that road is my business, not anybody else's. If I build a private road through there and I'm building a house under the family division, I still think that's my business.
Well, we would only be doing, in that case, we'd only be grant, before we would only have been doing it in cases where there was an easement granted to someone else through there. It wasn't just a driveway, it was...
See, we've got one, a discontinued road that wants us to abandon it. That the corner of the house may actually be in the old road bed, that? But it been that way for on ten years.
No, I mean, the house I used to live in, it was clearly on the plaque, the VDOT right of way was on my, was my front porch. They built the front porch across the VDOT right of way. And that was probably, the house was built in the twenties or thirties there, you know? They probably signed the right of way after the house was built.
That's what I'm saying. They, they, they meant after the fact.
Yeah, they said, "Oh, well," they probably didn't even realize they were signing away the front porch.
VDOT through history has been known to go through and say, a lot of these back roads here that were twenty and thirty feet, by one act, they jumped to forty feet, whether the people liked it or not.
You know, a couple of houses in the county when they came in and built the road. The road, the banks, it's higher than my house.
Well, I think the idea was is make it easier for the people.
Right, while I do a, that would match up, let's say, do less than thirty-five feet from the edge of the road. But that would not match up with the subdivision ordinance.
Well, subdivision ordinance is going to be, it can be made to match what this is.
If it's twenty feet, that might not have all the variances coming to us. On the large roads, the VDOT right of way would still take precedence. So if it's a seventy-foot right of way, you still can't build a house in that right of way even if our ordinance says twenty feet.
Well, that's what I'm saying here on this picture. See, that's showing you that thirty-five point five, well, it doesn't matter. Our ordinance says thirty-five feet from the center of the road, they still can't build in the VDOT right of way. That's my point. Even if they're varying widths, the varying width doesn't matter really because you cannot build a structure in the VDOT right of way period or in a VDOT prescriptive easement.
So from the edge of the road as it is constructed, twenty feet back. That makes it easier for our citizens. And then the subdivision committee can look at what we pass and...
Adjust it accordingly.
I mean, I don't know. We can go around and around and around, I guess. Uh, yes, that's a motion.
Are you including in that motion to eliminate the application to private roadways?
Yeah, I don't want private, other people should be able to do on their private. I mean, I don't know, that, if their, private roadways are not always families.
If it's open to public travel but privately maintained, let's say there's a, let's say subdivision ordinance is adopted to allow a subdivision on private roads, you could have a development where people are coming and going on privately maintained roads. So the same considerations for our safety might apply.
Yeah, that's, that's my concern about private roads that are, I mean, not your road through a hay field, but if there's more than two or three...
I mean, I wish before we vote on, well, changing it, first of all, don't we have to go to the public here and change the vote?
Change it, yeah. Yeah, my motion is, you know, I think your motion's valid, right?
Well, I took it as registral language.
Yeah, registral language.
Or a question, when you pass Stewart's Knob, it drops down as near as, is that ten from thirty-five feet from there? Because it's seven feet from the...
Well, I didn't, I didn't measure what it, what it is was.
Fifty-five or sixty, I think. Yeah, from there on down, like, I've got the lot there beside the tax driveway. It's seventy feet there. And I was told that if I wanted to establish where I could put a building, that I measured thirty, measured, I measured thirty-five feet from that center line to establish the, the edge of the right of way.
Yeah, this one would be south of Stewart's Knob.
Yeah, back toward town. No, mine's back toward town.
This is seventy feet down by the same one. All right, but once you pass Stewart's Knob towards Park...
I can't remember if it's sixty or fifty-five. It'd have to be looked at.
I think it's variable down through there. I would just like to mention, if you do twenty feet from the edge of the finished driveway or road, we do have some roads, such as Stewart's Road, Oak Farm, where, I can't remember where it is, Epping Mill Road, not Epping Mill, but there's another road where it's about forty-foot right of way. I would say twelve feet of it is paved. So, I mean, it's, there's not a place for two cars to pass. But the right of way still is forty feet, so if you're doing it from the edge of that road, you still could end up building right on the property line.
Not the property line, the right of way.
Well, anything that's not part of property is the right of way.
Well, I'm saying, you keep using the term property line. It depends on where that property line is at. But we're talking about the edge of the road and we're talking about VDOT right of way or prescriptive easement. So if it's forty feet, if the total is forty feet, and we put twenty feet off of the road versus the right of way, then it could be, it could be within five to ten feet of the edge of the VDOT right of way or prescriptive easement.
I think we might, might see it a little bit different. The way that we know that we can measure it from is from the front property line. If that road is forty feet wide and it's only twelve feet paved, twenty-eight to fourteen feet from the center of that road. And it could be right on the, right on the property line.
I wonder if subdivision, you always protect the house to be restricted.
I understand that connection to the subdivision ordinance. But see, the, unless we require a, and we have a lot of properties in this county that haven't been surveyed.
Oh, yeah.
Unless we're requiring, Mark, to require the people on those instances to get a survey, I understand what you're saying, but in the end, you still can't build in the VDOT right of way or VDOT prescriptive easement period. And it doesn't matter whether it's fifty feet, a hundred feet, or ten feet, or whatever.
So if Mark is out to approve a building lot, is he looking up whether...
He, he depends on the property owner, right?
It's almost to the point that you just want to get something signed from them that it's not being built in the VDOT right of way. And then if they've got an issue, VDOT, then they can play it out.
Well, that's what I was getting ready to say. At what point do we, how far do we... At what point do we, how far do we wanna be in the middle of this?
I mean, I don't want to just eliminate the ordinance and go down the road.
Well, wouldn't that pose that either?
Yeah, seriously.
Let them work it out between the property owner and VDOT, and then they can put in it all together.
Unless we're required.
We're not.
You're not required, but...
There's legal counsel, what are you saying?
I sense some hesitation.
I gotta...
I think you wanna give, I think you wanna give two considerations to the health and safety aspects.
Absolutely.
You know, the way I'm reading the code here, there is, I guess, room to adopt a standard for houses that is measured from the property line, and a standard for buildings that would be measured from the finished edge of the roadway. That way, it's a separate review for subdivision purposes and building code.
What is it right now for the, for the property line for a house?
We do not, the subdivision ordinance doesn't look at whether it's a house or a commercial building, it is the setback line for any building or structure.
And what is it right now?
Currently, it's thirty-five feet from the front property line, unless it's a prescriptive easement, then it is sixty feet from the center of the road.
But we can't adopt that in this ordinance because we wanna include buildings in that, and we can't use the property line for buildings.
Well, it's, it's just complicated because, we basically, we talked about, because sometimes the property line is going to be the center line of a roadway, and that's not gonna be the right measure.
Well, yeah, but I'm telling you, back to what she just said, under prescriptive easements, it comes from the center line of the road, correct?
Correct, yes, sixty feet.
But you're saying a property line, you're taking into account that the, the, the VDOT right-of-way is the property line?
Yes. I mean, it, they may not maintain it, but it is still their, their right-of-way.
So every, 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 every prescriptive easement that VDOT has, that distance is measured from the center line of the road down.
Correct, and which really would be the property line.
So a property line could not be, would not be designated as the center line of the road?
Not on the plaque.
Um, if, yes, if, if there is a road that goes through, surveys do go to the center of the road on a prescriptive easement.
They do.
So, the front property, on a prescriptive easement, the front property line acts exactly the center of the road.
It's the center of the road.
And it counts from sixty feet back.
Right, so you're saying that on, on a standard VDOT right-of-way, not a prescriptive easement, then the front property line is actually the edge of the right-of-way, VDOT right-of-way?
The front property line, which is the edge of the VDOT right-of-way, yes.
So in that instance, then, the property owner shouldn't be paying taxes from the right-of-way back to the center of the road?
Right of trail.
You understand what I'm saying?
Yep, yep, yep.
Because I know, I know some that are not prescriptive easements, but on their plaques, they're showing the center line of the road as the dividing line.
I know that it's that way on some road.
Yeah, but you understand, I mean... What I'm saying is, I don't think it's right for a government to have its cake and eat it too, and eat it too. You understand what I'm saying? If, if, if in that instance, it's the right-of-way, their right-of-way, then for tax purposes, why should the person be paying taxes on something that's not theirs and not counted towards their property?
That is an excellent question to pose to the general...
In the reverse of that, should we even set the double standard ourselves?
Say that again?
Should we even set the double sta, in the hypothetical, only one instance, counting one instance, that's a lot?
That's something that you all can change. I said, that is something that you all can change in the subdivision ordinance after a public hearing.
Right.
I mean, you understand what my point is. On one hand, we're counting, on one hand, we're not.
But I do understand, Mr. Durbin, and that's what I said earlier, I mean, we have a, the public safety is, is something that we can't neglect. And I'm not saying we are, but I mean, we have to keep that present in our minds. Perhaps that was the better way to say it. I mean, it has to be present in our minds.
Right, I agree.
It does, and so the opinion says you have to take that into account.
Right, right.
And my point, though, is the public safety and just more...
Overstepping.
But almost, honestly, I'm almost at the point that maybe this should be taken up at the same time as our subdivision ordinance, so that whatever we pass then, we match this to it. Because we don't really know what that's gonna be yet, so it's not like we pass this now, we may be passing it again. And in the meantime, what I was gonna ask earlier, administratively, we can decide not to have this impact private roads. I think that's what you'd said.
Or does it have to go, see, right now, the interpretation is all right. If we change our interpretation that it doesn't apply to private roads, does that have to go to the public hearing?
Let me look at the code, let me look at the language.
I may have misunderstood you in the early meeting, but I was thinking...
Well, I think, I was thinking the same thing you thought when you said...
So the, the language of the subdivision ordinance specifically key to publicly maintained, there's no such limitation in second, sixty-two dash thirty-one, which is the vision, the sightline regulation. So it would apply to public or private roads. The maintenance issue would not matter, it's whether they're publicly traveled, who would not be minded.
So the code of Virginia does say private roads needs to have a setback, too?
It's, the code of Virginia is open, it just says, it says any street or roadway. A locality may regulate, adopt a setback from any street or roadway, thirty-five feet.
Right, but that is kinda helping to interpretation of what we consider a street or roadway, isn't it?
I think it is.
Our ordinance says roads are highways.
Right.
But a private road is a road.
Well, almost need a definition of that.
I think that's my... It's what they have to, and right now, it's pretty well open to whatever the majority of action is.
That is the definition that the subdivision ordinance committee is working on, is the definition of a road.
I understand that, but in relation to what we're talking about in this specific against this here.
Because we have definitions for buildings and structures, but we don't have definitions for road highways. That might be the easiest thing to add an additional explanation of what road and highway is within our ordinance. And that way...
Whether it's a, a maintained or discontinued road...
If you wanted, if you wanted to exclude privately maintained roads, it would be very simple to just add, sort of within thirty-five feet of the roads and highways, just revise it to breed within thirty-five feet of publicly maintained roads and highways.
Publicly...
Or discontinued, if you wanna keep that safe.
Public road.
You said public maintained.
Publicly maintained.
Or discontinued roads not maintained.
If you want, if you want regulated discontinued roads, yes.
But there's a difference between a discontinued road and a private road.
But I then come back to some private roads, some developments could have sight distance problems that might, I mean, are we just gonna say, just because it's private, we don't care about the safety of those folks living on it?
But anyone that's subdivized in an actual subdivision would fall back to whatever...
Subdivision ordinance, it's okay.
So the only thing that would impact would be, I give my kids four plots of land, and that piece, that road going up through there is now a right-of-way for five families, and is it a public road or a private road?
Discontinued road is still considered public road.
Right, so on that, you would still maintain the distance.
Right, yeah, that's what I would like to see, is just come back with a definition of the, of the public maintained and discontinued roads, and then if the subdivision ordinance changes, then we try to match that.
That's it, then. And the question is, do we have to go through a public hearing process to, to have that definition of the road added to this? Not to subdivision ordinance, but this, 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 this particular thing.
The sight distance?
Or...
Not to subdivision ordinance...
No, the sight distance.
The sight distance ordinance that we've got. We have to have a public hearing just to clarify the definition of the road.
If you're changing any of the language in the ordinance, you would need to have a public hearing.
Well, then, I think that's what we need to do.
I would, I would suggest maybe we have that language come back to us in January, and then match that one, set the public hearing.
Yeah.
Whatever the subdivision ordinance, I mean, I don't wanna try to get them matched up.
Well, the subdivision ordinance is gonna be a while off, so if we can adjust this one...
It would, it would save half of our issues if we allow those private roads.
The difference you want us to do is clarify so y'all know that I brought you to subdivision ordinance.
Well, so Mark will know how to enforce that right now. I mean, mine's in black and white, so, I can't speak for the subdivision ordinance committee, but what's something that has been discussed is doing away with the sixty-foot setback from, for a prescriptive easement, and just having all setbacks be thirty-five feet from the property line, whether it's a private or public road. Right now, we don't allow private roads, so that would be something that would be new, we'd recommend it, and would have to be passed by the, by the board. But we wouldn't have the different, forty-five for one case, sixty for another.
But that won't work, that won't work in the prescriptive easements, especially if it's on two-twenty-one or Route Eight, so we might as well go back and rethink that. Because you just said, you know, if it's seventy feet and you're, or if it's sixty feet and you've done thirty-five feet, then you're on the center line, you're still very close to it, so we'll have to readdress that part of it.
I think the best thing to do probably for, for those, Route Eight and two-twenty-one, is to get a list of VDOT of where there's a prescriptive easement on those roads. I've never seen a prescriptive easement on the main road. I'm not saying that there can't be, but I've just never seen one.
Well, and that goes back to what I was saying about having different standards for a primary road and a secondary road.
Mm-hmm, right.
Which I think you can, and that would, that would take care of the problem. You could have a set of guidelines for a primary road, which is Route Eight and two-twenty-one.
Two's what I want here.
Then all secondary roads would fall into the, of the category, but for what we're doing right here, I agree with Lauren. Give us a definition back that's, you know...
Can I add one thing to that definition, maybe?
Go ahead.
I think, I was thinking back of what Mark was talking to us, and I think also adding the edge of the public, we maintain road, would give him a point to measure from. I think that's, that's his problem, he wants to measure from.
Yep. And, uh...
Finished it.
Finished it.
Finished it.
Finished edge, done the definition.
Well...
Now, just...
Now, are you still, are you still talking about leaving the thirty-fives in place for now?
For now.
And then...
It solves his problem of, his problem was four hundred foot. Our problem was, we didn't want it on private dress, so that solves two, two things. The final problem is, what's the distance? And then that has to be decided through subdivision ordinance.
And even, well, and the way that's worded, too, even on the larger width ones, it still takes care of the problem, because if they don't get out of the VDOT right-of-way or prescriptive easement, they can't build there anymore.
Right.
And then we put them far enough away from the pavement itself that it shouldn't hinder our sight distance. I could live with that.
For now.
Right. To eliminate the private road for...
Turn our discussion.
Do you know what to do?
I may need to go back to the transcript here.
You are?
I think I know it. What you need to...
So, I know that no decision was made, and he's come and got to you, but was he not had asked if you all had, I guess, approved the placement of the sign for the Floyd Grove Center, which I think she said is twenty, is only twenty-some feet off of the right-of-way, and she wants to know if that is still good?
Ask Mark.
That she, she wants...
From the right-of-way or from the, from the...
Edge of the right-of-way.
Yeah, or the prescriptive easement. I'm sorry.
I think that right-of-way is actually eighty feet wide there, she said.
Well, she's, it's a big...
So, it's like twenty-some feet back from the property line.
Right.
And she said, you're all under what Mark has been told as far as how he measures it.
He's been measured from the edge of the road, so that's what we're saying we're challenging to, so it should...
But we're keeping it at thirty-five. If we bring it to twenty, then that's...
We're keeping it at twenty-five. I mean, we're keeping it at thirty-five.
I have for now.
That's probably the edge of the road. If it's a forty, I mean, if it's an eighty-foot right-of-way, that means it would be forty feet to the...
Eighty, and then they can do it.
Which would be, we should be good check. She's twenty-some feet beyond that.
Twenty-seven.
She just wanted confirmation that it was still good placement.
And if she runs into a problem, she can always ask for variance.
I would love that.
That's actually sixty-six feet off the road, there's no way, if we're doing thirty-five on the edge of the road, that you're still talking, there's no way from the center line that the road is thirty feet. So that should be, she should be twenty feet out of the...
Have a little more? Do I have any more questions?
It's time to ask her forgiveness.
Well, they have to, they can build a base out here and we'll live and stand in arms and hang it down. There's ways around.
All right, thank you very much.
That was easy one.
Yep.
Here we go. Mr. Chairman, I would be asking for a brief closed session now for a couple of, a couple of subdivisions in the Freedom of Information Act. I'd be looking for closed sessions under section two-point-two, dash thirty-seven-eleven, A seven and A eight, for consultation with legal counsel concerning pending or threatened litigation, and specifically legal matters, specifically an update on the pending opioid litigation, an update on the tax assessment litigation that's filed in the Fourth Circuit Court, and an update on, or a discussion of the possible enforcement of the solid waste ordinance. That would be the A seven and A eight, and for A one, just a brief discussion regarding the ongoing search for county administrative.
Thank you. Sarah?
Commissioner, you said?
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.